Welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting, November 13th, 2025. And we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We say it so fast.
Okay. Before we start our meeting, I just wanted to first of all, recognize all the veterans in Acton. This has been the week for Veterans Day and thank all the veterans in Acton and all over the place for their service, but especially for our Acton citizens who are veterans. We very much appreciate your service. And I also would like, on behalf of the school committee, to send our condolences to Jen Rue, who recently lost her mother this week. We had the services today, so we send Jen our best wishes. All right, we'll go on now with one, two, which is adjustments to the agenda.
We do have adjustments to the agenda. I know you have an announcement, Mrs. Shane, so why don't we do that right after comments from the public?
Okay.
In between two and three.
Okay.
And then based on your announcement, I'll add, after you're done, I'll add an eight-three to new business when the time is right.
Okay.
Okay, so take it from there.
We'll look for comments from the public. No public comments tonight?
Hi.
At least we had one comment from the public. Okay. Now, before we go into our celebration of learning, sadly, I have something I need to read for us tonight, and we'll speak a little bit about it afterwards. Dear Judy and Acton School Committee members, serving on this committee has been an honor and a joy for me. I have truly enjoyed working alongside all of you in our shared passion for the Acton School, its students, faculty, staff, and administration. However, it's with heartfelt sadness that I must resign from this committee as my work schedule and number of personal commitments have significantly increased, such as I am unable to continue to serve the Acton School Department at a level which I would want and offer the level of commitment that it deserves. While my heart wants to continue working alongside you with a shared passion that we all have, I know that I would not be able to serve in the full capacity the role requires and not otherwise compromise the needs of my family and work. While I know that we all juggle personal and professional lives, I hope you can understand the need to prioritize family and personal life. Thank you for welcoming me onto this important committee, and I wish you the very best in your continued efforts to champion the students and employees in our Acton School Department. Sincerely, Teri Minahan. On behalf of the school committee, I want to say this is a very sad letter for me to read because Teri has been such a great contribution to our committee, to our meetings and knowledge and background that she has brought to the committee. It's been so helpful and very, very in line with everything that we're doing. So with that, I'll let Teri say anything if she wants to say anything more than what I just said.
Well, as Judy knows, I went round and round the Mulberry Bush about making this decision, but it's been one of those ongoing sagas with my teaching schedule having to get a substitute so that I can get here for meetings and all of that. So I was called into the principal's office and told I have to make a decision. And that along with other instances in the family, just dynamics are changing in a sandwich, you know, relationship that we have. So I'm very sad to be leaving the committee, but I know you'll find someone that will fit in beautifully. And again, my gosh, you know, this is the best team to work with, just the best team. So very, you know, open and welcoming, so I appreciate all of you. And thank you for what you'll continue to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing what you have.
Thank you, thank you. It's been my pleasure.
So I'll look for a motion to accept Teri's resignation with much regret.
So moved.
Moved by CJ, seconded by Jeanette. Home favor. Amanda will be here. She had an earlier appointment that didn't get over point in time together here.
So we can add eight-three under new business, which if you just write it in, Jennifer, eight-three will be a school committee process to fill vacancies, and I will lead that and bring you up to speed on what our obligation is. Eight-three, new business. Thank you.
Okay. Then we will move on to our celebration of learning.
So, middle school soccer this year. Last year when I was presenting this, it said Acton girls soccer. This year it says Acton middle school soccer, and that's because we had both a girls' and a boys' team this year, which is why I also have Coach Matt standing here with me. He coached the boys' team this year. So I'd like to share some things that we've learned, some general things that we've learned so far is good sportsmanship, something I could be heard saying every practice, "Do not kick with your toe." Stamina, perseverance, and communication, these all came from some of the ladies on my team. Is there anything else the captains would like to share? Did I miss? Ben, like?
Spreading out.
Spreading out, yes. Spreading out on the field. What we enjoyed the most, things we enjoyed the most was bus rides on the away games. I personally enjoy bus rides strangely more now. If we're on a minibus, I have to drive, which you think I would like less, but it feels more together, more community, more team-like being on that minibus than, you know, having five kids on the way back, five kids in front, and we're all, you know, all together. McDonald's trip, you know, last away game of the season. Learning new positions, you know, we had to do a lot of swapping around, whether we had some boys coming to sub for us and they had to play different positions, or some girls going to the boys, having to try different positions. And the spaghetti dinner, something new we did this year is we hosted a spaghetti dinner. Kudos to Coach Matt, who spearheaded that. Who, team bonding, it was a great time. It was truly a tradition that I hope we get to continue. And I have some pictures of some fun times we had. Mostly girls' pictures because, you know, I was busy taking, you know, taking pictures of the boys while they were playing and stuff. But yeah, we had a great time this season. This is the most fun I've had coaching at AES this year, and I think it has a lot to do with the athletes and the other coaches I had with me. It was truly an incredible season. I'll let Coach Matt speak on his season a little bit, if he'd like to.
Yeah, I think, you know, the team we had on the last day is a completely different team than what we started with at the beginning of the year. And it's really rewarding to kind of see everybody's individual journey, you know, throughout the season, and then as a team, as a unit, how well everybody grew. And I'm really proud of everybody, and I think you guys have a lot to prove.
I think it definitely marked like a new chapter in Acton soccer this year. It's a new beginning. It feels refreshed, brought back to life. And the soccer season wouldn't go on without a few people. And to be honest, not just the soccer season, the entire athletics of the school would not go on without two specific people, and we wanted to recognize those people tonight, so.
The team behind the team. So, Mrs. Cormier and Mr. Braisher, you guys would, uh?
Oh.
Oh.
TB, that's you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think it's important to recognize how smooth, you know, the season went for everyone, and that's not just, like, we don't have a lot to do. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to make sure you guys are where you need to be, games start on time, you know, everybody's to and from safely, et cetera, and stuff. And some of the swirliness with canceled games, you know, before they, fifteen minutes before they start. Thank you. Really, you guys, like, really made things a blast. You know, pristine field, it's just, you know, it's great, so thank you.
We always get compliments about our facilities. We get compliments about communication, and those are, and transportation, those are coming from you guys. I wouldn't be able to do my job, and I wouldn't be able to host these sports seasons without you guys, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You know, for my first season, right, like, driving the bus was a new experience, right? So I mean, my first, you know, my first, you know, okay, or the key, right? Yeah, see, and Amanda had everything just did it perfect and every, you know, one less thing to worry about, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you guys as coaches for being there for the kids.
Thank you. Athletes, you have a bunch of great years.
Could I add a little something as a grandparent who went to all the games? I have to say that seeing the coaching staff work so nicely together, so seamlessly together to incorporate boys and girls into each of the teams, it was awesome. And you brought, you taught the kids how to have joy all the time because we didn't win every game, right? But they always had joy in the playing, and that's what made us happy for both of the teams. It was just really great to watch. And then the, just the professionalism. You taught the kids, you know, exactly, this is what you need to do when you're hosting another team and all of that. So it was very, very well done, and you're right, it's not the same team, you know, that we started with in the fall, but I look at the team that we had last year, and oh my goodness, they were just babies back then. And it was amazing to see the growth, so thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. Appreciate it.
Yeah, great job, guys.
Anybody here to add and go to celebrate?
Yeah, enjoy your tacos. Have some cookies before you go eat tacos.
Go eat cookies, Horace.
And Luke, I got these from the Horace Mann lady, so you can look at all that. It's up to you. Here they are, guys. Did he even have to run up the retirement account, Luke? Good job.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi.
What happened?
Oh, Ross, he just cut his leg.
Cut his leg?
Yeah.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Jump it over. Good.
All right, then, let's move on with our agenda here to progress monitoring with iReady Math with Brandon.
Yeah, so first, I want to thank Patty. She and I were at the conference in Augusta today on PBIS, and I left a little bit early to get back for this. Patty should be probably just leaving now and has a long drive ahead of her, but she helped put this together and is the one who pulled the data that I'm going to get to here. So we thought it would be helpful for you guys to learn a little bit about the personalized instruction summary that iReady has. You might hear teachers or students refer to it as their path, or their my path. So the point of the path is to help students fill in the holes that exist within their math education and achievement. Those holes can come from a variety of different things. It could just be a particular area of struggle personally, algebra, great. Geometry, less so. For a student, it could look like, you know, two-digit multiplication is an area of struggle, even though they're fantastic at, you know, division or algebra as an example. It could just be that they're new to the district and they've had a different background in their math experience in curriculum. They could be coming from a school that used something very different, had kind of a different timeline for when things were covered. It could be due to absenteeism, whether chronic or just, you know, you missed a couple of days here or there. Our teachers should be checking student paths on a weekly basis, and the point of that is to look for the areas of struggle. You can see if the student has taken a long time on a lesson or if they had to repeat a lesson multiple times. That would indicate to them that this is an area where they were not familiar either with the content that was being presented or it's an area of the content they just don't do very well with. Teachers can also use the data to create small groups in their classroom. You can group students together that have similar areas of struggle or similar holes in their education, and then you can work with that small group as a teacher to try and fill that in. The recommendation is that students should spend between thirty and forty-nine minutes per week. Why forty-nine and not fifty? Great question. Teachers find pretty creative ways to fit that in. Most of our staff keep this as part of their daily routine with students, but it's usually not going to be more than, say, like, ten minutes, which would get us to that forty to fifty, depending on how Wednesdays look. Ideally, you ask that students are passing seventy to one-hundred percent of their lessons, and I'll explain that a little bit more on the next slide. So the data that we'll show tonight is their progress during the month of October. We want to point out that students also took the diagnostic within the first two weeks of school, and grades three through eight also took the MATE through the year testing, so they had less quote-unquote "time on task" or less time doing their path on iReady at the start of the year. But as the year goes on and that time kind of increases, we should see that reflected in the data here, too. Percentage of lessons passed, you're actually looking for seventy to eighty-five percent. This indicates that students are being appropriately challenged. If they're doing higher than that, if they're only eighty-five to one-hundred percent, it means they're probably doing lessons where the work is actually too easy for them, right? So as much as like one-hundred percent, that's got to be great. It actually means that the kids are probably taking the easy way out. They're not actually questioning themselves at all. If it's below seventy percent, that starts to indicate that's a need for more teacher support, specific instruction that's aligned to whatever that specific content is that students are struggling with. When Patty pulled the data for here, we just broke it into seventy to one-hundred percent, and then I think it's like seventy to fifty and below fifty. So our goal, when looking at this data, which you would want all students in that top area of the seventy to one-hundred percent. So we use kindergarten as an example. Left-hand side is the weekly average lesson time on task. The green is where we would like them to be. Below that, again, in this case, it's indicative of the other responsibilities we had with testing and diagnostic. And then on the right-hand side is the percentage of lessons passed. And so we have both the previous month, which would be October, and then year-to-date, which is just September and October. And you would see, as an example, year-to-date, seventy-one percent of our kindergarteners are in that seventy to one-hundred percent passing. Seventeen percent are in that fifty to seventy, and then thirteen percent of students are in the zero to forty-nine. So this zero to forty-nine percent passing, we protect thirteen students out of our kindergarten, so we're only talking maybe two students, maybe three. But these would be kids that would be causing red flags to go up right away for the teacher. There's an area of struggle right here. They could already be identified students in kindergarten. It's not likely they're already identified for math, but it's possible. But that's something where you look at that information and say, okay, I know it's these two kiddos. What do I know about them? Are they already receiving accommodations through an IEP or a 504? Are there other areas of struggle? And if not, then we need to look further into that to determine what it is that's holding them back. First grade, again, you see similar things here. You'll see the percentage of students that are in that seventy-one-hundred percent is greater than it is in kindergarten. Grade two, these are actually really outstanding scores here in second grade, ninety-seven percent and one-hundred percent for the year-to-date. I didn't really have time to look at all this data yet today. I hadn't seen this slide yet. That's really impressive for our second graders. Third graders were at ninety-two and one-hundred. Again, that's pretty impressive. And you'll notice that I think for all the slides so far, we haven't yet really had the majority of the kiddos be in that sweet spot of thirty to forty-nine minutes a week. But again, we'll look for that to increase as the year goes on. Grade four, we're still over ninety percent for last month. Eighty-eight's just borderline ninety percent there. But no students last month that were in the zero percent. Eight percent year-to-date, so that would indicate to me that there are the small number of students there in fourth grade did make improvements from September to October, so that number has dropped from eight percent to zero. So that's another positive note. Grade five. Grade six, so middle school is actually the first place where we see the weekly average lesson time on task is right in that sweet spot where we'd like to be. So I guess credit goes to Ali Levaser for doing that. And actually, for sixth grade, it's ninety-five percent year-to-date in that seventy-one-hundred percent in the middle school level. That's also really impressive. Seventh grade also doing really well in their paths. One-hundred percent in ninety-four. So six percent of students, there's nobody in the middle spot here. Six percent at the bottom out of, what do we have, seventh grade, like twenty or something kids? So, so it's just, what, two kids again? And then lastly, the eighth grade here, their numbers are a little bit lower. I'm not surprised to see this because eighth grade is when you start doing more with the work in algebra, which being very new to many of our students, pre-algebra, I think, would be just getting introduced at the start of eighth grade. Very different concept, not one they're really familiar with. Not surprising to see those numbers drop as the year goes on. I would hope to see those numbers increase across the board. And then lastly, Patty and I wanted to share just a couple of different ways that teachers can motivate students to engage in the iReady pathway. A lot of our elementary classrooms offer something similar to this, like an iReady punch card. Every time you pass an iReady lesson, your teacher can see it. You bring them their card, they punch it, and if you earn, you fill up your whole card, you earn some type of class reward or individual-based reward. And then this last one, whole group, I think this is in our third grade. I believe, or I already assume that they're so good with their little puns. Students are filling these up, and when they do, then the whole class will earn some type of incentive reward. I believe that is it. So I buzzed through all of that fairly quickly, but if you have any questions at all about the pathway, how it's used, or what the data means, I'm happy to speak further on it or answer questions separately.
I like it. I like how, you know, the goal isn't a hundred percent so that they're always still learning.
Yeah, and sometimes that can be a hard message for students to understand. Like, it's okay that I didn't pass this the first time. I have to go back and do it again. But our teachers are really great about making sure that they understand the purpose of this work. Visiting classrooms, you'll hear them, kids are getting frustrated. Message is usually like, no, it's not that you don't know it, you don't know it yet. You're not expected to. Like, if you knew how to do this, you wouldn't need me right now, so, you know. So that's, it can be challenging for students to understand that, especially at the younger age, but our teachers do a great job messaging on what that means to have productive struggle when it comes to new content, things like math.
And it makes sense that kindergarten is not there yet because they don't do iReady and pre-K, do they?
No.
So that makes sense.
It would be a brand-new learning tool as well as content.
I think it's impressive, and I love this iReady program because of the way you can track individual kids so well. And I think this is where we're already seeing some improvements in our math scores, and I think they'll only continue to improve as we go on with this program because kids can be met at there right where they are and fix it and move on, and that's good. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, you know, when you listen to the news and how other school systems go in other states, what are they doing wrong that we're doing so right? I mean, it's amazing to listen to what goes on in these school systems. I know they're bigger, but gee, where's?
It's, one of the challenges that faces a lot of school districts is that there are different tools used to measure student success. And so while we're finding a great deal of success with iReady, which is aligned to the state standards, that doesn't mean that it's going to show up the same on when we do like the MATE through the year testing. It's a totally different measurement tool, and so they might be looking at something different. So we might struggle more in one area and be stronger where we are in our own kind of local assessment system. I think for other larger districts, I can't really speak to them too well, I suppose, but I can imagine that the difference in tools is where it usually falls. I think they probably have something similar where they have an internal assessment system they probably feel fairly good about, but then when you compare it to whatever the national report card is, like, when we do the NATEP testing, because, you know, we're randomly selected every year somehow. Just lucky, I guess. I won't be surprised if we do find more gaps. Be smart, Brandon, don't say something stupid. When there are so many different tools being used and when there are different agendas for what you're trying to measure, I think something that gets lost often is whether or not students are actually making growth. So one thing that I appreciate is that our tool focuses a lot on, as Judy was just saying, where students are at, meeting them there, and helping them grow.
But it just sounds like the whole country is all lost.
For a lot of reasons.
Well, that's not just math.
Not just math.
It also probably helps that we're so small that we can course correct pretty quickly. So if something is not working, we can say, all right, ditch it, find something else, without having to, you know, say, oh, well, it works kind of well for this school and not so well for this school, but really well for this school, so we'll keep it because it does this and this. If, you know, twenty-ish classroom teachers are like, eh, it didn't really work, we can go, all right, do something else.
Yeah, local control in a small school like this is incredibly important.
Yeah, and I think the iReady reading and iReady math are some of the best things that we've brought into the curriculum in the last couple of years, few years. And not only that they meet individual needs, but that you can actually see the individual growth of each student. Punch into each student, see the individual growth that they're making each year. And that's how you know if they're learning anything, right? That's good. Thank you, Brandon, very much. All right, let's move on now to consent agenda, and I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, that we accept the consent agenda. All in favor? Do you have any questions for any of the administrative reports? Just sorry as I'm going through them, there are a lot of things going on in every department. Every report had something special going on. I was interested to see, you think Paula, that the electricity is one reason because we switched to the lighting system?
And now, we've had it long enough now we can really see the savings in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it saved money.
Yeah.
Do you think any of this is due to our involvement in the solar thing? Is that planned out at all?
We're still saving with that. I think there are about thirty-two hundred dollars that we've saved this year so far with that. And then we're using less kilowatt hours with the new lights. Savings all around.
The tech report here, it looked rather interesting, although I didn't understand all the new words. Matt, and what he's doing.
Still waiting to hear on the federal grant, which is a shocker with what's been going on at the federal grant.
Yeah. And the other thing that he mentioned a lot in his report was about getting in a new phone system that also takes care of.
The cameras.
The cameras as well, yeah. Anybody else have anything for any of the administrators? Still looking for some ed techs or special ed? And also for here? For just special ed. One for here? Okay.
Oh, I do want to say yay to the septic pump, Andy. No trailer needed.
Your presentation on that.
You got the celebration of learning and all of this other positive stuff, and I'm stuck with the septic.
Hey, but you didn't need anything, anything extra, right?
Yeah.
No trailers, no water brought in, no?
Nope.
No pumpers?
That repair went awesome.
Yeah, that's good.
Good.
Okay, John, have your reports?
I do. I have a few bullets for you to, you and the public. Scheduled a full building audit outside for safety with Deputy Solomon, who was an SRO for many years in fifty-seven. I've gotten to know him. He's really skilled at looking around the outside of the building for access points. Like, literally, he and the deputy chief, so the highest-ranking uniformed officer of the sheriff's office is the deputy chief. The sheriff is elected, deputy chief is an employee that's non-elected. They're both coming December fourth. Andy and I are going to spend two hours with them, and they're actually going to like get up on the roof and decide if they had to do with roof access, where is it? How do we market from the sky if they have to bring in drones? And it was a really interesting conversation. Just walking around the outside with Deputy Solomon. He goes, see this big rock right outside your door? And I go, yeah. He goes, you need to move that because you could go through a window with it if you worked at it long enough. And just being able to see what's going on outside. Joe Jordan helps us with the inside. What do we as staff need to do to secure this library? These folks will help us understand outside, coming in, what do we need? And we're looking forward to that in early December. I went to the Green School Symposium a week ago tomorrow. That was really interesting, and it That was really interesting, and it really validated all the good work we did with our building upgrades. The town was generous with the building upgrades, the COVID money, the Univens, the MERV-13 vents, excuse me, filters that we use. Really, a lot of where this is heading is if you're going to do an addition or a new school, here's what you may be thinking about. One of the cool things is there is an incentive to do, if we ever wanted to take a look at, let's just say, solar again on the roof. I know that Andy looked at it years ago prior to me being here, and it didn't seem feasible. Well, now, maybe with some new technology, it might be feasible, but you have to pay money to figure out if it's going to work or not. Up to $75,000 grants through the town. So we would ask the town, would you apply for this grant to do a feasibility study at no cost? And it would work through the town. We can't ask, but the town can afford the school. Meanwhile, they could ask for the town hall or any other town property. So that's something, you know, we may want to talk about in the future while it's there. And efficiency main, I just sent something to Andy. The lighting we did, we're seeing the savings. There's another round going out now. If we want to look for any other area in the school through efficiency main, we've realized that the payback on that is great. So those vendors were there, it was really interesting, but it really validated the good work we've done. There's a lot of schools in Maine that were built in the 1940s and 50s, and they really haven't been upgraded very much. And the towns need to figure out, should we just demolish this and open anew? Or should we put money into this to try to make it more green and efficient? Big, big questions that are happening in a lot of Maine communities that we don't have to deal with. Thank you for everybody who supported our physical plan. Trunk or treat went terrific. I sent you some photos, it was awesome. I mean, everybody turned out very theme-based on the part of the staff. It was a lot of fun. Thank you, school committee, for the retention money for the drivers. That went out, and they were pleased. And the first installment of that went out last week. We're looking at mid-year and end-of-year as well. Our new driver's on the road, and we look forward to a fifth driver passing his test in December sometime. Maybe we'll have, maybe we'll have five drivers on the road in January. That'd be nice. That's our hope. And lastly, December meeting, we'll kick off with budget goals. As you know, the budget is going to look a little, how we're going to do it is going to look a little different. That's a sealed deal now. We're going to be doing a one-day workshop, and then there's a Thursday follow-up for anything that's outstanding. We'll have to discuss how we want to do our school committee meetings. We don't have to do this tonight, but maybe we can do it over email. Normally, we back off progress monitoring and even celebrational learning because most of our evening meetings for three months have to do with budget. Seems that we're doing it in one day. That kind of frees up January and February's meetings and maybe even March. Progress monitoring, maybe not so much because I can't keep going back to the well to take a look at it. I mean, I think three data points during the year is probably enough. Beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, our work is doing. But I think celebrational learning is something we could probably continue to do and bring in different programs and people to discuss what they're doing and do Q and A with you. I'll talk with Judy, and we'll get some emails going on that. But I think our school committee meetings will look a little different because they're not all tied into the budget this winter. It's just going to look a little different.
Yeah.
So I'll have the budget goals ready. I'm going to, I have a doc that I'll update, I'll share with Brandon, and he and I will meet and talk about what we believe needs to be where we're heading. And we'll work with you and the Warren Finance Committee and the town to make sure we get the resources we need for the students and staff. Looking forward to it.
On my agenda. Okay, any committee reports tonight? One, right?
Policy.
Just one second, Reid.
Yeah.
So I move that we accept EBBD, temperature standards for schools, as an official policy.
I will second that.
Okay, it's removed that we accept this policy as a final and accepted policy for our policy book, book page, whatever. Now, we don't do the book anymore, I guess. All in favor?
Just want to make a note for the public, that school committee is well aware, and so is staff, that we've caught up on our policies, and Jackie has a lot to do with us. We want to thank Jackie for that.
Jackie's been fantastic.
And it's been a year, it's been almost two years that we full-time looked at that decade rotation. So the policy committee will meet when we find a decade rotation and/or if a policy is questioned and needs to be revised for some reason, deleted, or if a new law comes to town and we have to update. So we'll meet when we need to versus meet every Monday. We caught up. So good work, policy committee. Thank you for your work.
Pretty nice change, wasn't it?
Yeah.
In addition to thanking Jackie for her policy work, we'd like to thank her for the good issues that she provides for, treats for every meeting. It's unbelievable, it's awesome. All right, let's move on to eight-one. And this is an update on the CDS transition to public schools.
Sure, I can speak to that. So coming into this year, one of the tasks that John and I have been working on is decided how to move forward with the requirements involving CDS. So we completed a self-assessment of our pre-K program. John and I did this with Shannon Johansson, the classroom teacher. After going through that, we identified several strengths. Our staff, for one, we do have somebody who's highly qualified to be working. Actually, we have two people when we've had two classrooms. Our facilities, our nutrition for the kiddos, access to a dedicated recess area, and the content curriculum we're using, all graded out as things as strengths for our program. Really, it was only one area of opportunity, and that was more specific professional development for pre-K, both for Shannon as a classroom teacher, and then, of course, our specialists who work with our pre-K students. In regards to needs, there were really two, and they were pretty closely tied together. They recommend having a bank of resources that you can share with families that includes interventions going from tier one up through tier three, and then being able to have that as part of a written family engagement plan, what that would look like. These aren't requirements. This is what the state has said, are things that they highly recommend. It's something that we don't have, but it's something that we can easily work towards.
What would that consist of?
I think the family engagement plan is meant to be kind of a step-by-step for like what pre-K looks like. How do we find families and students? How do we offer time for them to come in? We do the screening already. I think this is just capturing that as part of a comprehensive plan, including things like transportation, what the facilities look like, what is offered for nutrition, what the day looks like, so that any interested family could come by and say like, hey, I am going to have a four-year-old next year. What does pre-K look like in Acton? And we would have a written comprehensive document that we could share or post on our website to say, like, this is what that process would look like. It's, I mean, it would take a little bit of work, but it's not a huge lift to try and pull something like that off. So once we completed that, we reached out to the Department of Ed, and we set up a meeting with our implementation team here, which consists of John and myself, Paula, Sharon Prey, Shannon Johansson, and Michelle Libby. We set up a meeting, and we met with them on November 6th. We talked to their transition team to talk about what our next steps are now that we've completed that process, and what our options look like for next year. And really, we have three options. We can accept just four-year-old students that are part of CDS to our school. We can accept three and four-year-old students that receive CDS services here at the school. Or we can partner with a community, no, not, thank you, daycare. It's been a long day. Community daycare, provided they meet what the state has as a benchmark. I think it's like a three-star program. And John has already reached out to them, and I believe we've heard that two of our local daycares have already met that threshold. And so those are our three choices. And so our next step as a team is to have somebody from the DOE come in on December 4th. They will be here, they'll be here for a couple of hours. They will look at our space, they will meet with the teacher, they will meet with the team. They'll talk a little bit about what we offer students here, the activities that take place in the classroom, again, the facilities that we have available to the kiddos. They'll make recommendations for any improvements or things that they think exist. I'm expecting we'll probably hear mostly positive things from that after doing that self-assessment. Then by January 2nd, we need to commit with the DOE how we'd like to move forward in regards to bringing four-year-old CDS students into our program or the three and four-year-olds. I don't know if we have to know yet, John, maybe you know, if we have to commit to whether or not we're bringing them in here or if we're going to partner.
I don't think so. The way I read that...
It's just a three or four-year-old piece, right?
Yes, the way I read that is to check the box on which group, and you still have plenty of time, we still have plenty of time to plan on what we're going to do.
And I should also note that if we opt to do just the four-year-olds starting next year, we then have to take three-year-olds the following year.
Okay.
So within two years, we will have both three and four-year-old CDS students either in our program here or send them out to a community daycare that we work with.
Do we know the numbers that are out there for preparation?
Yes, Sharon had those numbers.
It's on the spreadsheet with finance.
It is. I think next year, we're looking at, it's either, it's four, I think, of the four-year-olds. I think it might have just been one three-year-old.
One or two. It's six or less with a combination.
Yes.
So knowing the numbers is good for preparation?
And the diagnosis is available to us because not all diagnoses are treated the same, right? Depending on what their learning needs are.
Right.
So we will know how to set ourselves up for success with these particular individuals that we're aware of, which is very helpful.
So every year, you'll know who's up and coming for the future?
Yes.
Yep.
So you'll be able to plan ahead for what services. I mean, the majority of them tend to be things like speech.
Right.
Yeah.
But sometimes it's not.
Yep.
And knowing ahead of time what that's going to look like is helpful. And if it is a three-year-old who comes into the program, it's six hours a week for a three-year-old. So that would be, we could do two three-hour days. But they would not necessarily be with us full-time. Whereas if we accept four-year-olds with CDS services, they would probably just be here full-time as part of our normal pre-K anyway, working with the four-year-olds.
Three-year-olds will probably look very different. We're really getting to the point now where things are coming together.
Yeah.
I envision, that needs to be signed in by January 2nd. So probably the December meeting, I will probably ask you to take, to make a vote on our recommendation for either four-year-olds or three and four-year-olds. And we'll have the recommendation for you next month because we have to sign off on it in January. Then the money follows. This is supposed to be 100% on the state to make this work for every municipality and every region in the state of Maine. And we do have some numbers. I think roughly, did we think it was about $88,000, dollars, what we looked at? We got the spreadsheet, roughly, for next year to take care of, the cohort of kids that we need to take care of. Where that parcel's at and what that looks like, we really don't know. That's the work we have to do, but we know that the funding is supposed to be there for every child.
You plan to take a survey to see who's out and around town?
We already know through CDS who's been identified. So we know who's in the pipeline with CDS. Now, great question, is there somebody who might show up at screening? And all of a sudden, we just, they, mom and dad, within concern, we discover something, and then there's some testing, and now all of a sudden, we got a four-year-old that now qualifies because that can happen. And that's why they take a, the number of children we start with in September, and then our October count is our final count. So say we start with six in September, we'll be funded for six. Then in October, do we have six? Oh, no, now we have seven. So now we're funded for seven, and that stays funded for seven for the school year, and they can only add on, they won't detract. So if we had an eight or nine, they would pay for that.
So the four-year-olds, obviously, we have pre-K, four-year-olds count for pre-K.
We already have universal pre-K.
So they would count towards the number of students in the classroom, like the teacher-student ratio? Would three-year-olds count towards that ratio as well?
I think that's going to be a completely different conversation, would it not? The three-year-old program won't be commingled with the four-year-old program because it could be up to six hours a week.
Yeah, they did say that they, you can't have the three-year-olds with the four-year-olds. Like, that's not a problem.
Okay, so, but they're not...
But because they're not considered, I don't think it would impact the ratio.
So the six hours a week student wouldn't take up a spot that a full-time student would take?
We're looking at, we're looking at...
We'll have to confirm that, because that's a really good question.
Right, I think, yeah.
My understanding from our media is that would not be the case. It would just be, and the majority of the time they would be here, they'd be receiving whatever the services are anyway.
And Brandon, there is a specific certification for somebody to provide services at some layer of this. I'm being vague because I don't know the specificity of that certification.
It was meant to be, but I don't know what that actually means.
We may have to hire for that because it's a very, it's, put it this way, we never needed it here before because we didn't have younger, we didn't have three-year-olds. So either we can have somebody on staff step up and want to do that, or we have to hire for that. It may not even be full-time. I think it's, a lot of this is going to depend on who shows up. I guess at the end of the day, the school committee needs to understand that we don't really have a choice. This is happening.
Yeah.
The question is, when do we want to jump on the train? I think the timing's perfect. We've had two other cohorts go ahead of us to kind of rough it out, what works, what is difficult. We have very few kids in Acton. Maybe we can place them with our local daycares, maybe not. But we're going to move forward either way because we're going to have to. And I think we're in a great position to do this. We have somebody coming in, I believe, on the 4th of December to do some work with us, and that'll be very telling. Brandon's leading this, by the way, he's doing a great job. He's our point of contact for all of this. And we'll kind of get like an audit and have our team get together. And then, yeah, it'll be like a week before our meeting, so we'll be able to update you. And we can take a vote on what we actually recommend the school department do over the next year.
Great, great.
Good, thank you. All right. We'll move on to the septic work.
Andy, you need the power, you need this for any reason?
No, I do not.
No pictures.
You didn't take pictures?
That camera that you had there.
No visuals, no aroma, nothing?
Somebody had to buy the ankles, he was holding a cellphone. I'm like, all right, okay, Andy.
My job does not get that interesting. Stevens pump from Monmouth came down on Monday, and the replacement of the pump went very well. Cost around $2,700. It was really, it really didn't interrupt the school day at all. I was nervous that we might have to keep the kids in for recess, but the repair only took about an hour or so. Went great, didn't interrupt the school day, and it's in the rearview mirror now, so very pleased with how it went.
Good, great. In this case, boring is good.
Yeah, boring is very good. Things go well, yeah.
So when they were in there, was it like looking at everything else too, just to make sure there wasn't any other red flag going on?
No, there were a couple of things that he noticed when he first came down and diagnosed the problem. The other pump was replaced in 2012. The other one was 1992 vintage, which he said was unbelievable that it had actually lasted that long. But he inspected the other pump when he was down there, and everything is working very smoothly. And we've updated all the information in the panel so that the next repair will hopefully happen when I'm long retired. So the new guy will know who to go to if there's a similar issue, so.
Awesome, great.
How far down is down?
The pit itself is about 16 to 18 feet deep.
That's about far enough.
Yeah.
Another one of those situations where we were down to, you know, we have double systems. You know, we have two furnaces, we have two water pumps, we have two septic pumps. And when you're down to one, you're like, well, we're one pump away from closing the school on any of those issues. So we were kind of flying solo with one for about a month. And I always wonder, boy, if he calls me and says this is, things are not working, then we're shut down until we're shut, do we open again? So I'm feeling a lot better now, moving into the cold season than...
Yeah, there's always like a Plan A and a Plan B. And, yeah, I had kind of a plan in mind if something did happen to keep us rolling, but fortunately, we're good.
So thank you, Andy, for getting that done.
Yeah, thank you.
I like the way he said it was in his rearview mirror.
Yeah. Choice words.
Very careful with this one.
Too many puns.
Okay, then, let's move on to eight-three, and John's going to explain the process for replacing Terry on our board.
So the school committee by law has 30 days to appoint a community member to fill Terry's position, which means it's less than 30 days until our next meeting. So we could have an appointee in place that evening with a vote of the school committee to, you know, have this person join the committee through June because June is the next election. Not to fulfill the rest of your term, but to fulfill the rest of your term until June. So it'd be for the rest of the school year, an appointed person to sit. It's 100% on the school committee to do that appointment. It's not interviewing, it's who you want, who's interested. It's on you to do that. The person gets appointed the evening of the December school committee meeting, but can't vote. I think this happened to you. You can join the group, but can't vote because you need to be sworn in most likely that Friday, the next day, at the town with Jennifer. So we're kind of, we'll be talking about that, and we'll work on that for next month. So that, yeah, that's pretty much, if the school committee failed to do it, then there would need to be an election and the town would do it. But you have 30 days, so I think we're going to be in great shape.
Yeah.
So that's how that works.
All right, then. Well, if there's nothing else on our agenda, I'll look for a motion to go into executive session as for one MRSA 4056, the personnel matters. as for one MRSA 4056A Personnel Matters.
Would like the minutes to reflect that in executive session. Mr. Ward will be joining me with the school committee, it won't just be myself.
Motion.
451.